For the regular meeting of Batavia City Council for Monday, September 21st, 2020, I would ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as always, we ask for a special blessing on the community of Batavia and those who surround us. Now, we are ever mindful of the many instances that the coronavirus has had on our community and in the surrounding area, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered on all those who have been impacted or affected. We also tonight ask for some deeper blessings for our world around us as we go about some of the more turbulent and powerful discussions that we as a world have had in many, many years. So, tonight is a very delicate time in the history of the world. We just ask for a special prayer upon the world that we live in, hoping and praying that everything will come out for the betterment of mankind. As always, we want to remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberty of the United States of America. We just ask that a special blessing be shined on each and every one of these men and women as they go about in their vital mission, as well as all those others from our country who are serving with them. As always, we ask for direction and vision and understanding by the members of the city council as we act on the items of business before us, and we know that we are with a group here that surrounded ourselves with and within ourselves, that we are here to do what is in the best interest of the community of Batavia for both today and its future. We ask for all these blessings. Amen.
Alderman Miller, with you, ladies and Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the God, the United States of America, and to the Republic where the which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the Lord Jesus Christ.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Rosato?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knop? Janzett?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer? Saron?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
So, we have thirteen, is it twelve here and two absent?
Yes.
Okay. We have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Okay, the reminder to ask everyone if you're going to speak during the meeting tonight to please use the microphone as we are being recorded on BATV. Moving to item number five, items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Janzett, do you have anything?
Your Honor, I'm aware of none.
Okay. Moving then to item number five, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Janzett?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place unfiled the Committee of the Whole Minutes for August 25th, 2020; the Historic Preservation Commission Minutes of July 13th, 2020; approvals: The September 18th, 2020 payroll in the amount of $901,528.76; the accounts payable check register in the amount of $5,758,278.12; City Council Minutes for August 17th, 2020, and September 8th, 2020; Ordinance 20-61: Annexing 1450 Thoria Road; Resolution 20-109-R: Authorizing certain elected officials and staff to receive confidential Prairie State information. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Janzett, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of the consent agenda as presented and read. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Okay, that motion is approved by a vote of twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Okay, on my clock, I'm showing 7:36, so we have scheduled a public hearing for the establishment of Special Service Area 66 at the Mill McKee Retail Center. Who's got that one? Scott? Scott Buneen, are you on the phone?
Yes, I'm on.
Do you have anything to say about the McKee Special Service Area 66?
Sure. This is a backup special service area for the area around the Menards, including the Menards New Detention Pond that would be on the south side of McKee Street. And this would be a backup special service area that would only be activated in the event that the property owners do not maintain this pond. So, that would be the exclusive purpose of this, and again, it would be a backup special service area and not activated.
Okay, anybody have any questions on it? Okay, then I guess I didn't, a, do we need a motion to adjourn the public hearing? Is that what we wanted to do? I'd ask for a motion?
No move.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Rosato for adjourning the public hearing. Kirk, take a vote.
Voice vote, did you say? Okay.
Vote to adjourn the public hearing on the special service area.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Twelve yes, no-nos, two, or, two absent. Okay, moving then, we need a motion for, do we want a motion to approve this thing or we're just having the public hearing? I guess that's later here. Okay, moving then to matters from the public for items not on the agenda. I don't have anybody. Okay, moving to item number nine, which is the Main Street Report, and we're honored tonight to have the newly sworn-in executive director, and I'd ask her to introduce herself because not everybody here knows you.
Yeah, hi. My name's Beth Walker. I am, like you said, I was appointed on Friday, I guess, or got the position on Friday. I have lived in Batavia for the last 20 years. I've done a lot of community service. I've been with Main Street for the last year. Was the president of the Visual Arts Booster Club for the high school and middle school, and that runs Rock the Runway. I don't know if you never are familiar with that. So, there's other things I do. I have two high school graduates, so, a little bit about me. Main Street, I just wanted to say the official cancellation of Oktoberfest and Bat Fest. There will be promotions around the town in conjunction with those dates, but it will not be the official events. We are finalizing the details of the indoor farmer's market. That should be set, and applications should go out this week. And we're also gearing up for Small Business Saturday. So, does anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions for Beth?
Welcome.
I feel really short.
I can see you.
All right, thank you.
So, you are in the off, why don't you give us, for the record, so people will watch it on TV, give us your, maybe your email address and your phone number at Main Street so people who want to get ahold of you, they can get ahold of you?
Sure. My email address is beth@downtownbatavia.com. It's better to call me on my cell, so my cell number is 630-263-1429, and if you have any, need any information, you can check out our website, downtownbatavia.com.
And Batavia Main Street is located at what location in downtown Batavia?
We are at 5 East Wilson Street, which is right by Fultos.
Yeah, that's kind of the landmark of the east side over there. Fultos is, so...
Yeah, everybody knows that.
If you stumble in there, he'll tell you where to go, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Mine, I like to hear it.
Anybody else have any questions for? Well, welcome. We wish you the best in your new role.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving then to item 10, which is Ordinance 20-60, Establishment Special Service Area 66 for the Kingsland Batavia Land Company and Menard Subdivision. Alderman Callahan, do you have this?
Yes, sir, thank you. This is Ordinance 20-60, as we just had the public hearing for this SSA. This would be to establish the dormant SSA number 66 for the Menard Subdivision encompassing the Mill McKee Retail Center. This will be, as I said, dormant and as a backup, and we previously allowed this, approved this under Ordinance 20-44, establishing the hearing date for the 21st, which was tonight. So, with that, I would motion to approve Ordinance 20-60, Establishing Special Service Area Number 66, Kingsland Batavia Land Company and Menard Subdivision, Mill McKee Retail Center.
Second. Moved by Alderman Callahan, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of Ordinance 20-66, Establishing Special Service Area Number 66 for the Kingsland Batavia Land Company and Menard Subdivision. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ordinance 20-60 is approved by a vote of twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Okay, moving to item number 11, which is Resolution 20-108-R, Authorizing the Purchase of a Sutfin Fire Engine Pumper. Alderman Wolf, do you have this?
Thank you, Your Honor. Earlier this year in the 2020 budget, the Fire Department was authorized to purchase a new engine pumper unit. In January, they formed a committee to determine the needs of the Fire Department and look for what unit they would want to purchase. They didn't bring us an entire list of all the different manufacturers that were out there, ranging from 527,000 to 391,000 base price on the different engines that they looked at. What they ended up settling on was, well, not settling on, but what they picked was the Sutfin, and that with all the additions and changes that we would want for our department would be $546,329. Now, that being said, there was $700,000 set aside to purchase this here, so this is well under that amount, and this unit will be delivered next, I believe, next summer, correct? Chief? Next summer is probably when we'll get that. So, if there aren't any questions, I'll make the motion that we approve the purchase of the Sutfin Fire Engine Pumper for $546,329.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Rosato for the approval of the purchase of the Sutfin Pumper as presented. Any comments or questions?
Your Honor?
Alderman O'Brien?
I just want to say kudos to the chief, to Chief Dikey. You know, this is a custom apparatus we're getting here. They had a lot of bells and whistles that he had to add to it, and still managed to keep it under, you know, almost $200,000 under the budget number. I thought he did a very good job with that, and they, you know, in the Cal meeting, he did say that they're very happy with their purchase.
Anybody else?
If I could just say, I know that the Fire Department spent many, many hours, as you can see in the memo that Chief Dikey put together, that there were so many different manufacturers that they looked at, and so many different criteria that they looked at as well, and so I just want to, you know, applaud their efforts on how carefully that they have chosen this particular piece of equipment, because of course we will have it for the next 20 years.
And, you know, and our department uses it for more than just a pumper or a fire engine. I mean, it is a multi-use vehicle that houses a lot of equipment, and, you know, can be used in just about any situation that we have. So, it, the, all the things that get added onto it are there for a reason, and, you know, the committee that gets together and puts all that together on there, makes sure that it will fit just about everything they need it to do at any point during its service life. So, I'm really happy that the way they set this one up.
Yes.
Well, I'd like to add a couple of comments, and first of all, I'd like to say that I agree with everybody that I think the Fire Department did a real nice job with this one and brought it in at a reasonable price, and I think they are to be commended for it. The comment I would like to make is, is that the department had to do some stuff with this truck that they may not have had to do had we not had a Batavia and Countryside Fire Protection District. And as the chief informs me, the plan is to keep this fire engine on the west side of Batavia so that it is immediately available to respond out into the large part of the area that is the Fire Protection District, specifically west of Randall Road. And previously, and I guess we're going to maintain it for its water status, we already had a truck out at the West Side Station that had 1,250-gallon water tank on it so that there was a lot of water if we needed it. This truck has been designed and is being spec'd to have a 1,000-gallon tank on it, which is about a little bit more than what the normal fire truck has, and therefore it probably requires maybe a little bit bigger engine and a few other things that go with it. But I just want to point that out to the fact that this is being built not only for the city of Batavia, but also for the Fire Protection District, and that's a point that I certainly will probably at some point in the near future want to go and share that news with the elect, or with the appointed members who represent the taxpayers in the Batavia Fire Protection District about that they are really getting quite a benefit with this truck that the city of Batavia is paying in acknowledging that we do provide them with fire and ambulance protection, but this has added to the cost of this truck. And so, I would suggest that we'll probably have to have some conversations with the Fire District as we go forward here about how much money they are paying the city and how much they should be paying the city, given the things that we've done to bolster them out. If you look at their protection area out there, they have some of the largest houses in Kane County in the Batavia Fire Protection District, among other things. And they also have the whole campus of Mooseheart, the part that's been annexed and the part that, where it's all, where the orphanage is, which is not annexed, that's all within the Batavia Fire Protection District, and we don't get any taxes off of that. So, that's, that's kind of a pure benefit to them. So, we, we really need to make sure that we got equipment here that can service that area, because there are times when we have a fire and we do need extra water, and I'm glad we're going to be able to have it, but that extra water didn't come without a cost, and so I would hope that the members of the Batavia Fire District will be paying attention when we have some conversation with them about how much the city has paid to provide good protection to them. That being said, anybody else? Not the court call the roll on the purchase of the fire engine.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Janzett?
Aye.
That one is approved by a vote of twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Okay, moving then to item 12, which is Resolution 20-107-R, Authorizing the Sale of Municipally Owned Real Estate North and West of 917 North Van Buren Street. And who's got this one? Alderman Janzett?
I do, Your Honor, thank you. So, the city acquired some property at 916 Park Street back in June. The city has been in contact with the contiguous property owner, and they have expressed an interest in purchasing a portion of that land. It would make their lot more rectangular. The remaining land at 916 Park is still marketable and a very attractive lot, and the city should have no trouble selling it. Land has been appraised at roughly $10,000, and the city must get at least 80% of that value. This item does need a two-thirds majority vote this evening in order to pass, and after passage, the city will list the property for sale in a local newspaper. If there are no questions, we discussed this in executive session previously and at the last Cal meeting, but if anyone has anything else, otherwise I would move that we approve 20-107-R.
Second. Motion by Alderman Janzett, second by Alderman Wolf for the motion to approve Resolution 20-107-R, Authorizing Sale of Municipally Owned Real Estate North and West of 917 North Van Buren Street. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Janzett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Motion, yeah, we do have the two-thirds, so, motion is approved by a vote of twelve yes, no-nos, two absent. Moving to 13, the Administrator's Report.
Thank you. We have a lot going on here. Today, the city posted the candidate guide for the election, which will be on April 6th. There is a seat available in each one of our seven wards, as well as an unexpired two-year term in the first ward. So, there's both a four-year and an unexpired two-year term in the first ward. And you can find the candidate guide on our website, right on the homepage, and if you click there, you can download the candidate guide, or it is available here at City Hall at the reception desk, and also right next to the reception desk is a nice big picture of where all of the wards are in case you're curious about in which ward you live. The ward map is also available on the website. If you scroll down to the bottom of the homepage, there is a tab called City Maps. If you click on City Maps, one of those is the ward map, and so you can also find that information there. We recently had the opportunity to purchase some wooden barrels that we are going to use at the suggestion of Alderman Saron, who saw this as he was traveling, to do some temporary lighting on North River Street. And so utilizing those barrels and filling them with concrete and a very tall four-by-four piece of wood, we are going to be able to at least put the catenary lights on the parallel on the east side and the west side of North River Street until such time as we are going to put money into the 2021 budget for the more permanent solution of stringing those lights across the, the street of North River Street. But that, of course, will take that engineering plan as well as contacting each one of the property owners and getting an agreement in place with them. This is something that we were yet able to achieve some lighting on North River Street yet this year, so we're hoping that we'll get that in place by the end of this month or early in October. We are exploring options for outdoor dining. Just at about an hour before the meeting, I received a, an email message that attached to it were the Chicago New Guidelines for Outdoor Dining, and so I'd like to take a look at what is being proposed there. As well, we have a meeting of Metro West, our Council of Government, on Thursday, and I'm sure that that's going to be a topic amongst all of the municipalities about ideas for assisting our local businesses for trying to continue their outdoor dining season in some way. I know some people want to put up tents, some people want to have outdoor heating, and so we'll look at all those options and try to work with them on the best and safest means of extending the season as much as possible. We are planning to pick up the outdoor furniture that constitutes the outdoor public dining areas on November 9th, that's Monday, and to put those away because in the event that we do have a snow event, we need to be able to do snow removal in those areas. And so we'll be storing our equipment for the season as well. We have some tables that we are leasing from Funway, and those would be returned, as well as tables that the Park District, I want to acknowledge, want to get, once again, what a great partner the Park District has been this year in providing us with a free loan of those picnic tables. Still have about eight of those. With regard to the public parking lot that's on South Batavia Avenue on the west side of those buildings between Main Street and First Street, patch was applied to some of the larger park holes, potholes that exist in that parking lot last week. As well, we have installed additional signage on South Batavia Avenue in both the northbound and southbound lanes, indicating that there is public parking back there, and also that all of the businesses remain open during construction. Does everyone know the Lincoln Highway Memorial that is on the building, pretty close to the corner of First Street and South Batavia Avenue on the west side of the street, beautiful kind of historical mural that's there? Well, you don't really notice it at night because much of the, the lighting there has, has gone out and is in need of repair. The Public Works Department is in the process of replacing that lighting, so that will be lit up at night, and that should look very nice. The Finance Department is preparing the background information that we need to submit to Kane County for our CARES Act funding. Although our application was approved last week, there are still more steps in the process. One other thing is that we will be asked to sign an intergovernmental agreement with Kane County, and so we'll be bringing that to you in, I anticipate, the next couple of weeks. And also, after the agreement is in place, then the city can submit the detailed paperwork to request the funds. And also, just to remember that because we are accepting CARES Act funding, that that will require us to conduct a special audit. We also had to conduct a special audit over this past year, but ordinarily don't have to do that, but because of accepting this funding, we will have that additional audit this year. And Community and Economic Development, we had no alternative proposals for the One Washington Place Project published by the September 18th deadline. Upcoming dates with regard to TIF number six on October 1st will be the meeting of the Joint Review Board. That will be at 10:30 a.m. here in City Council chambers. Also, there will be a public hearing regarding TIF number six. That will be the same night as the first city council meeting in November, on November 2nd at 7:30. And also, city council enacted the ordinance to create the Interested Parties Registry. And if anyone wants to be listed on that Interested Parties Registry, there's an application form available in the Community Development Department, and that will provide you with the opportunity to receive any public notices that are mailed out with regard to the TIF for a three-year period. Northern Builders has applied for a development review and design review for a new spec building to be located at 1200 Pearson Drive, and the plans are under staff review. And with regard to Public Works, the 2020 resurfacing project has commenced construction, should be completed by early October. The Area 3 Sewer Separation Project is on schedule to be completed by the end of this construction season. Prairie Street is on schedule to be completed by mid-October, which is ahead of schedule. The work along Batavia Avenue is anticipated to be completed by the end of the construction season, and then the work along Main Street will be partially completed on a block-by-block basis as, and they're progressing westward, and it's anticipated that final asphalt surface and landscaping will continue into 2021. But we are talking with the Main Street contractor to do some Saturday work. It's just a matter of being coordinated from a logistic and a financial standpoint, but we are working on that. The startup of the new northeast distribution electric substation is scheduled for the week of September 21st, and we continue to work with our engineering and professional advisors related to closeout of the wastewater treatment construction contract, and we've done soil borings on the Carriage Crest subdivision as part of that Phase 1 Part B of the project. In Information Systems, the permit, the online permitting system is live. We actually went live a few weeks ago, but we wanted to get a dozen or so permits under our belt before we publicly advertised that that was available, but there are a number of permits that residents can now do 100% online. And that is it, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions? Committee reports, the city services, Alderman Wolf?
No report tonight, Your Honor.
Government Services, Alderman Chansett?
Your Honor, no report.
Community Development, Alderman Callahan?
No report, sir.
Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
No report.
Do we have under 15 other businesses? Do we have any other business from the council?
I do, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Tomorrow, as part of Water Street Studios Activate the Alley, the Fox Valley Patriotic Organization is unveiling their mural, and that will be at 5:00 p.m. So if anyone can show up socially distanced with a mask, it'll be outside. That would be appreciated.
I'll see you there. Anybody else? Okay. I just want to take a minute to comment on a couple of things that are flying around town as far as conversation. And I will tell you that in many years I have had this office, I've never had as much input or observations made to me, or complaints echoed or expressed, as I have over the last four or five months since the whole Corona thing happened. And one of the real hotbeds of conversation, and it's just because people don't understand how the system works, is why can't the city do something about the school system? And this one never seems to go away. And this week, it's all been about why we, the city council and mayor, can't do something to get the football team back on the field so that they can play football. And before that, it was, they didn't like the schedule that the school board had put together. Before that, they didn't like the fact that the school wasn't being real clear as to whether or not they were going to open. And then we got back into graduation, and then we got back into the prom. And I can understand why everybody was angst up about all this, but at the end of the day, is, is, when I go to meetings with the regional mayors, I will tell you that every mayor and village president, and there's 283 of us in the six county area, every one of us has had the same lip service from our constituents about specifically the school system. Because there seems to be this thing where people turn on the TV news on Chicago, and they watch the mayor of Chicago, whoever he or she is, running the Chicago school system, or making a lot of edicts about it. So they think that a mayor or village president has some kind of a magic wand that we can wave and turn on the lights at the football field and get the game going. And so I've, I don't know how many times I've, you know, and I think we've been nice to everybody that's called, and I think they seem to understand it after you explain it to them. But I guess at the bottom of the day, end of the day, I guess I'm ready to tell most of them, if they call me now, that, you know, if you really have a big issue about this and you want the city to have some kind of a say in it, you better get your elected state representatives at the, in the Illinois General Assembly to get out and, number one, meet, because they haven't met in a long time. And secondly, that you may want to encourage them to take some, look at how governments run, although I will tell you, I don't think it's good for the city to be running the schools. But that's just what everybody seems to think is the power that all of us sitting on the city council have here is that we're running the school system. So I just wanted to air that one publicly with everybody, to let everybody know that we are, I don't want to say our hands are tied, but we have no legal authority to take any actions about any of these school issues. And we, I suppose we could make some broad statement, and it wouldn't be worth the paper it's written on, or the voice it said it, but we could, we could do it. But that's just the way it is. I feel sorry for, especially now, all these kids that want to play football, and they're being held up, and they're not being looked at for scholarships. And I've heard every angle of this thing. And it's, it's sad, it really is, but there's truly nothing that the city council can do about this. Then the other one that's out there that's recently, that I almost got a bang out of this. This morning, I'm walking in here, outside, and here are these three ladies on the sidewalk from River Rain. And they just wanted to express to me their dismay because they met in some apartment down there last night, and they watched, I think, I think it was the Emmy Awards on TV. And the Emmy Awards came on, and I don't watch that much TV, so I shouldn't even talk about this, but they, they gave the first seven Emmy Awards to some show that's on some obscure channel that the people, that the people at River Rain can't even get to. They don't know anything about it, where it comes from, and they're giving this, so they all want to know why they can't see this show that's winning all the Emmy Awards. And you want the mayor and city council to do something about this?
You got to break out your magic wand again.
Yeah, well, that's a magic wand. So then the lady says to me, and if this isn't bad enough, and I won't name names here, but she says, "I went into a Batavia store the other day, and I was going to buy my stuff, and I handed them a $10 bill, and they say, 'We don't want no $10 bill, we want your credit card.'" And I said to them, "I don't have a credit card." "You don't have a credit card? How would you expect me to give you change? I don't have any change here to give you. I would have to give it to you on your credit card." Well, this woman was absolutely dumbfounded because she had to leave her stuff on the counter and just walk out because she didn't have no credit card. So, as one told me the other day, they are truly the lost generation because they don't have the, and they've never been schooled in any school they were, classroom they were ever in. They never saw anything about any computer, any technology. They're, they're totally in the dark on the whole thing. And so as a result of it, they, they have no use of computers and whatever. We've, we've, we've taken some drastic steps here at the city, and, and Laura and her staff bend over backwards to help these people. I just want to share that with you. We have them come in, and they're looking to get a brochure printed up because they need the brochure to go to the store. And they don't have any ability to get the brochure printed. So we print it up here at the front desk. Mary, who sits up there, is golden about, you know, looking it up on the computer, and she's got the skill, so she'll print up the brochure for them, so they can go to the store. But, I mean, this is an ongoing thing. It's not going to go away, I'll tell you that. But I just thought, we had some downtime here for a moment. I just thought I'd share with you the latest of what's happening at City Hall as far as the city goes, and what our constituents are out there looking for. It's a wondrous world that we live in, and I will suggest that it's probably not going to get any, any better.
Nope.
Mayor, I have to argue with you. I think it will get better. I think it's just, we have so many generations, and it's just working, that generation that doesn't have those skills.
Right. Well, I mean, that's why I say, that's the part that doesn't work, because they're, they're not going to get the skills. So, you know.
And that, to me, is where there should be a great way to make a plan to work with the school district, or even the park district, to have a class or a community organization that pairs up the brilliant kid that's in fifth grade that can go and write that up and print that program out every week and send it to the River Rain. I mean, to me, that's something that somehow that should be able to be accomplished so that that can happen.
Well, we're doing that right now.
I was going to say, I think that's something, especially with the proliferation of all of the facilities that are being built in this area for the aging population. But I think that's something that somehow, even if we have to try to facilitate that through the school district, to make those connections, because that's a good thing to happen.
You know who's doing a great job of that is our public library. Our public library has a desk where you can bring in whatever electronics, whether it's a laptop, or an iPad, or your, you can't figure out how to set up your voicemail on your phone. The, the people at the information desk back there will sit down with you and, and help you work it out. They could probably, even if you've got a phone that has internet, they could probably even hook you up with, with some of these Netflix shows.
Well, I was going to say, maybe there could be like a social distancing viewing night around here.
Yes.
But they might only come one time and be like, "Oh, I don't think I want to watch that show."
They were just all fed today because they, this one show won seven Emmy Awards, and it's not on any channel, anybody in the place.
And we can't say it.
It's because it's spelled with a C, we can say it.
Well, I mean.
I got a couple of good ones for this one.
The roses.
We, we are the government closest to the people here. You have to appreciate that.
Right.
We're the ones that are right there with them. So we have to represent the whole gamut. So it's just, I thought it would be a friendly conversation for the council to have, to know what the folks are down here wanting us to do.
But one day, one day, you know, we'll, we'll get through all that. I always tell myself, but until then, you have such a wide range of skills of trying to accommodate. And, and unfortunately for those poor ladies, I mean, that's probably what their whole life, that's, that's what really gets them up, and that's what they think of on a daily basis. And it's a very big frustration for them.
Mm-hmm. You know, disconnected.
Right. And where it's so simple and easy for us, it could just pile, like, any little thing upon them, and then, you know.
I just mentioned it on a list that I've heard this week about the credit card.
Yeah.
But it's, it's there, and, you know, as Alderman Wolf just pointed out, we've got five senior living communities in town right now. We're about to have a sixth one open.
Yeah.
And we've been meeting with them, and it's now like they're going to be quite a dynamic group. This is the one out on Fabian, right behind the Walmart out there.
Yeah.
And that's going to be a, that's going to be quite a big complex.
It sure is.
And so we'll see what that one goes. We've had, I've had several people in asking questions about, when's, when do we think the Shodin thing's going to go under? I had one guy wanted to make a deposit to get himself a unit. I said, "Well, I think you're a little bit ahead of the game on that one at the moment." But, I mean, there's a lot of people in there. And a lot of this, I would describe, I think there's a tendency in this town that's going on right now, where grandparents are chasing their grandchildren. And because the one that called in down here was living in Rochester, Minnesota, and they wanted to get into Batavia because their daughter and her children were living here. And they, they were looking for something like the Shodin thing, where you could maybe go in and live there, and then lock the door for two months, and go to Florida and come back for Christmas and whatever. So there's, there's a lot of people out there that are looking to find those types of lifestyles. So things are, are changing, like you say, and it's just an ongoing thing that you go to the city, because we're the government that's closest to them.
You know, Mayor, if I may, I've had a lot of interest, people coming to me with interest for the One Washington Place. There's been a lot of interest in it, which is a good thing.
Mayor, before we close, may I make a brief PSA from our Police Department?
Sure.
We have had a significant uptick in burglaries to motor vehicles throughout the Fox Valley region, really, but including Batavia. And many of those burglaries result from the doors being unlocked. So if people would just make sure that if you're going to leave your cars outside at night, that you lock your car doors, because they really are just going around and trying to find that open door. And for goodness sake, don't leave your car door open and your garage door opener inside of your vehicle. That's an incredibly dangerous situation. So lock the car doors, especially at night. Remove vehicles from, remove the valuables from your vehicles when they're not attended. And there's also a, a little bit of a video about this on the Police Department's Facebook page.
And to add to that, look for your neighbors, too.
Yes.
And get to know your neighbors and let them know. I have my neighbors where I have one that I'm constantly texting him and his wife, going, "Hey, your garage is open." He's like, "Well, I want them to take my stuff." But I don't want them to come in your house and hurt you.
Right, exactly. Good point.
Okay, I guess I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Second. Move, Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien. Court, take a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Means adjourned.